All right, we'll call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Harrison County Board of Education on a special day, I guess, so it's a way to move because next week folks are out of town. So June 16, 2022, regular meeting will stand for the pledge. We- All right, that brings us down to special recognition and presentations. Pam Hotson Biller of the Parent Educator Resource Network and the Board Superintendent will be presenting certificates of appreciation to all our presenters, volunteers, high school students that assisted with childcare and restaurants for our Healthy Grandfamilies program.
We've already heard a lot about us, so we're really here just to thank a whole bunch of people. First of all, you all, the board members that are sitting up here that have been so supportive of our efforts to help the grandparents in Harrison County that are raising their grandchildren 24/7. And we have them raising anywhere from one to, I think, seven. Is that the most we have so far? Okay. So thank you all and our Board of Education employees, administrative personnel. Thank you, Superintendent Stubbler. Thank you, Assistant Director, right? Assistant, Administrative Assistant. Okay, see. Julie Mancini. Lola Brown could not be here tonight, but just your assistance when we have questions, when we have concerns, when we are trying to get information for parents, you guys are just great. Susan Miller, she has even met with some of our grandparents one-on-one. It's just been amazing, the outreach. Todd, thank you. With internet questions we have and computer questions, we're trying to get the family set up with what they need to be a part of the information network today. David Oliveri, he's not here, but his help with advertising what we're doing is just amazing and has just improved our overall participation. Julie helping us out with our money. We keep bringing in more money thanks to this wonderful community. And Mario up in purchasing, we've asked him some really sticky questions. It's different than just school supplies, you know? And then also, I'm going to let Julie talk from end about the involvement of the Family Services of Marion Harrison County and thank who she needs to thank.
So as social worker, my, I'm employed by the Family Services of Marion and Harrison County. Excuse me. So under the supervision of Carolyn Jones, I work as a social worker. My position is, Carolyn wrote a grant to United Way for my position, so my salary is paid by a grant through United Way. And so we want to thank them so much for their support of our program for our, in supporting our grandparents, because without them, we wouldn't be working together and doing the really good work that we do. And the connection that Family Services and United Way has with the community only enhances everything that we're able to do with our community partners.
Carolyn is on her way out of town, as I understand it. She is the director of the United Way, and they're up on the second floor.
She's Director of Family Services.
What did I say?
United Way.
Yeah, no, she's Director of Family Services, Marion Harrison County. All right, and then there were a couple ladies that were supposed to be here, and I don't see them. The Director for the Center for Healthy Grandfamilies out of West Virginia State University. We, I got a, I was contacted last week when they heard we were going to be doing this, and they wanted to be here. Melissa Lilly. And then one of two extension agents that she hired, they have divided the state in part in half. Amy Schauer is Extension Agent who we contact when we have questions and concerns regarding the project for the state. Okay, and then, you know, Lola usually at this time presents the parents. Do you want to present the book?
Sure.
If they're in my folder there, and you can tell them about the book. And then we'll get right to the certificates of appreciation.
No. No. All right. Please. We'll just grab one for just one. Okay. So when we have a graduating class, we always present them with a book. It's When I Was Young in the Mountains, and this is by a West Virginia author who was raised by her grandparents. So this is kind of symbolic that we present them with a book after they've graduated from our eight sessions of the Healthy Grandfamilies Program.
So we've got, do you want me to just do that now?
Yes. So this is one of our graduates, Beth Hart, and she has two grandkids and graduated from our most recent program. We had nine graduates, and it's our first one that's been live since COVID. So that was exciting. It was actually my first one live too in this position. So we are extremely excited. So thank you.
Thank you. My grandson Liam is in the second grade, and one of his reading assignments that he brought home this year was from, was from that book. I had fun with that, a lot of fun with that. And then, of course, he'd look at those pictures of the grandmas, and he'd say, "Oh, Grandma, that looks just like you." I said, "Yes, it does. It does." And what was, I was at the pool the other day, and, okay, you know me, I can't, I can't get out of that story. I have one of those like 1920s, 1930s bathing suits, because I have, I've had a little bit of problem with melanoma, but basal skin, basal cell cancer. Okay, so I pretty much cover up that the bathing suit pants come about down here. I do look like, I look like, kind of like a flapper, but in a bathing suit, does that make sense? And then it's got a, it's a nice long sleeve top, and it comes down, and it's just great. And so one little girl said to me, "Why are you in the pool with your clothes on?" And I, but now there's another lady coming, I mean, she's got the long sleeves and the pants clared down, and she's a dermatologist. I mean, I learned from her last year. And I said, "You know, it's not, it's a very special bathing suit. This is the kind of bathing suit you get to wear when you're a grandma." And she goes, "Wow." So I wowed her. Okay, with that story out of the way, please don't come to the pool looking for me. No pictures allowed. With that being said, we have, we have 71 certificates. Now, you know what happens, it's dinner time, and it's a tough time for grandparents to be bringing their kids out of the house. We have found, again, that's part of the problem we have with some of our participants making it to every session. So in this fall, we're going to start, and we're going to try doing it from 10 to 12, and see how the daytime helps out, because the kids, some of them, the smaller ones especially, 18 months, two and a half years, three years, they just weren't hanging in there with us this year. Okay, with that being said, one of the certificates we have is for Simpson Creek Baptist Church, and I'm sure there's nobody here. You want to take it, Anita?
Okay.
To the church?
I can do that.
I'm going to let Anita do that. Anita used to be one of our presenters, and she's very active at Simpson Creek Baptist Church, so we're going to let her represent them. They let us use their facility each and every time, free of cost, and just give us the run of the building and their kitchen area and just, oh, hey, he wants to get a picture of Anita.
Oh, a picture. We can wait for a group one.
Of the ones that are here? Okay, we'll do that. Okay. Next are the different restaurants that have helped us out. Are any of the restaurant owners here? Oh, okay, which one are you with?
Chick-fil-A.
Here we go. You're the first ones up. Chick-fil-A. Yeah. Give us a wonderful dinner that we can serve our families. Okay? We'll come on up, and then we'll get everybody up here to enter a picture, okay? Thank you so very much. Any other restaurants? I don't think so. Okay, then Buffalo Wild Wings provided meals, Mia Margaritas, Applebee's, Gourmet Cafe, Neither's Irish Pub, and Wonder Bar insists on doing the dinner the night of graduation. Yeah. And the first time a grandfather was going through the line and getting his meal, and he said, "Where's this been from?" I said, "Wonder Bar." He said, "I always wanted to go to Wonder Bar." I said, "Well, guess what? It came to you." Great food. And then Bonnie Bells always does a real nice graduation cake for us. And the Simpson Creek Baptist Church Women's Ministries, I'm going to call Anita back up again, they provide our desserts, half of the, half of the time. And then the other half of the time, the Bridgeport Methodist Church Women's Ministries provides desserts, so. All right, so I think next up, we have our presenters. And, we've got one here. Yeah, let me see the presenters. I have a moment. These are the presenters. Okay, so presenters from Legway, Angela White, from Family Services of Marion Harrison County is Carolyn Jones, she's not here. Cheryl Farley is a nurse out of UHC in the cardiac, yeah, Cheryl does our, how, what's it called? What's that one called?
Is it nutrition?
No, Cheryl Farley, the session on health. Okay. Dr. Kevin Junkins comes and does addiction, response to addiction, and trauma-related issues. Heather Stoniger always does, no, stress, stress. John Paul Nardelli does the one on communication. Melissa Garcia Webb from Family Services does the one on family relations. Thank you. Rick Rodriguez with West Virginia University Extension does the one on nutrition. Sarah Starkey, one of our own, and Susan Miller. What, Susan? They did the one on navigating the school system and technology. And boy, the big issue this time was truancy. All right, so those are the presenters. I don't see any of our, oh, yes, I do see an adult volunteer here. Huh? Huh? We had Amy Maxey come help, Janet Bucy, yeah, Bucy is a retired teacher, we had a couple retired teachers. Patty Kenny and her husband were there every week to make sure that once the food was delivered, that it was ready, served to the parents, and then after the meal, they divided up because we didn't leave anything there at the church, did we, then? It all went home with the parents. Julie Solomon, yeah, I gave her a certificate this time. Kelly Benner helped out with the kids. Linda Palmeroy, one of our own kids, Linda, come on up. Always comes and helps with the childcare. Margie Marion works with birth to three, and she always comes and does activities with one of our groups. We have a, we have a baby group, we have a toddler group, and then we have children like six and up to like 12 or 13, and Margie does a wonderful job. She did kitty around yoga with them and mindfulness and all those kind of activities, and, and I had, I pulled it out of her hat one night because Margie couldn't be there. And I did, we went outside and we did a scavenger hunt, and as we went around Bridgeport Methodist Church, and one of the little girls said, "There's a playground out over there," and I said, "No." She said, "Yes, there is. Do you think we can go there?" And I said, "Well, that was my plan, you know that." I said, "Well, let's take a vote, who wants to go to the playground?" And all those hands shot up, and I said, "I guess we can go to the playground, but we still got to find the things on the scavenger hunt. We can do that from the playground." So that worked out, it was beautiful evening, beautiful evening. Nancy Petito, one of our own, comes back and helps us out. Rhonda Reed from Robert C. Byrd coordinates students, and she has come a couple times to help out too. We've got a couple students from WVU, Sarah Roach and, I know I have a certificate for her, but it's not on here, a couple students from there. Terry Peas, one of our teacher's aides, Tracy Bell, right here. She continues to volunteer and come there. And then Mickey Gerber, one of our retired guidance counselors, always helps out. And I have a list here, are there any students here from Bridgeport High School? I don't think so. Oh, there is a student, Harper Randolph, would you come over? Harper was just such a jewel with helping with the like six to 13-year-old students. You know, she kept them on track, reminding them what they were supposed to do, make sure they stayed in line when we went over to the playground that, that evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harper, for all your help.
Thank you very much.
She's amazing.
Yeah. Any other Bridgeport High School students? That we would, they're probably about 15. And then we had at least that many also from Robert C. Byrd, any of them here? All right, you all need me to read their names or everything, or you're good with that? Yes, okay. Bridgeport High School. Let me just, one second. Blake Robison, Brian Huff, Bryn Rataball, Doreica Dedrickz, Eric Chen, Harper Randolph, Hayden Abraham, Isabella Petroff, Janie Prunty, Jenny Russell, Jensen Clayton, Jeremiah Woods, Kaylee Wilpon, Macy Holbert, Olivia Noonan, Riley Mullins, Sarah Rexrode, Sydney Tonkary, Victoria Vash. And then from Robert C. Byrd, and these will be mailed to them since school's out. Adam Fubio, Annalise Gentilosi, Aspen Linder, Chanel Ramus, Delaney Wolf, Haley Knight, Lindsay Lambert, Martina Howe, Morgan Fromm, Olivia Louter, Paris Barker, Reese Simon, Sophia Freeman, Sophia Wagner. And two of the WVH students were Ashley Burnett, I think she's a relative of yours, isn't she? Uh-huh. Ashley Burnett and Rachel White. And that's it. It's all 71 of them. Any questions?
Other than, we're appreciative that you get so much help from the community, because you're probably the only program, if you came and asked us for a million bucks, we could give it to you. So don't come and ask.
If we need it, Gary, we'll be there. But you know how blessed this project has been, from when Harry Green first gave us that, that $10,000, and it's not gone yet, is it? So we've pretty much set that aside, because he, they specifically said it could be used anywhere in the state of West Virginia. And I did get a call from a constituent, from a coworker, collateral coworker, I guess you'd say, in Charleston, they had grandparents that needed, needed insurance, I guess, both of them, and it was just like so much that was going to be covered, and there was just no way they could do the rest. I said, "Well, we have this money, and it's to be used anywhere in the state." But she called back two days later, and they got somebody to cover it down there, so. So we're just going to let that be used by Marion Taylor County, since, you know, we were so richly blessed, as you saw, by the Bridgeport Women's Club donation here a while back. And, you know, shortly after that, another $3,000 came in on top of that, 85, and then another 350. And, and we just got word that with, when Bonnie went before the state legislature, in past years, they'd given her like $300,000. They gave her 800,000. So we're probably going to, from what they told us, we'll be getting another $15,000 through the state legislature. And we just keep meeting needs and doing things to make our grandparents feel encouraged and supported and, and not so overwhelmed, not so.
Are the county counties in the state now having this program?
Well-
It's in all 55. They just don't have, like, I think, I think Harrison County is the most comprehensive of the Healthy Grandfamilies, because we did adopt everything that the West Virginia State University Grandfamilies Program suggested we do with the social worker and the coordinator and, and you all, you know, our partnership and the sessions and everything else. So it's all, in all counties, it just doesn't look like it does here.
I want you to tell me about our event yesterday evening.
Yeah, so we, we also have a support group. With Zoom, it was not very well attended, and I get it, because our grandparents are overwhelmed with everything, that's the last thing they want to be, is on the computer screen for a support group. So we're now, as everything's opening up, we had, we're going to start the support group up, but we decided to do three picnics this year. We just had our, our, this summer, June, July, and August. So I have those set up at different parks around Harrison County, and we had a really good event Tuesday night with the grandparents, and the kids came, and we had Chick-fil-A, and thank you. And then we were able to give out gift certificate, Walmart gift cards, because we know guests is high, and they're all traveling. But it was a wonderful get-together. They were really happy for us, and so we're working on developing community again with the grandparents, because this is what we've been lacking for the last couple years, and it's so needed, because they're in isolation a lot of the time with what they're doing. So this has been really, I think it went well, don't you think?
We had, if I remember, like 20, 19 grandparents and like 21 grandchildren there. There were 40 people.
And this was after that big rain we got, and we were in the lion's den at-
Lion's shelter.
Yeah. And so first, we didn't think it was going to go, and then it turned out to be a beautiful evening, and it wasn't flooded or anything, so-
Beautiful new playground over there, right beside that shelter, it was just perfect, that the grandparents could see right where their grandchildren were. That's a big issue with them, that's, it's a little big issue. All right, anything else, Julie?
Well, no, you see all of these certificates that she's talked about, she does all this. It's a, it's the most beautiful thing that happens. She has somebody deliver, she's got the food from these wonderful donors, somebody goes and picks up the food, somebody does this part, this part, she's got this run, and she's got backups for backups. It's amazing, she's amazing, you know? We couldn't, I don't even know what's going on half the time, she just lets me do my job, I mean, just stand up there and, and work with the grandparents.
That's what I told her, that's my job, is to see that she can just focus on these grandparents and the grandchildren and their needs, and just tell us what you need.
But this is so much, this is so much what she does, and it's, it's amazing to watch, it really is, so yay.
Oh, the picture, so everybody got a certificate, if you come up here. Dor, would you, Julie, maybe come down too, please? Anybody else that wants to come, board members? Julie, please can you take care, good care of our money?
I want to be by my room. No, people are going to have to-
She's got her certificate, she, her graduation certificate, yes, yes.
All right, tell us. Can you see her? Can you see Tracy?
I got, there was a strategy over there.
We're good? All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Harper came up then, she-
Yeah. I guess it's a fire.
All right, that moves us down to our next item, delegation, do we have any delegations signed up? We have no delegations. Superintendent, update.
Yeah, Mr. President, we just have a couple updates to provide. Mr. Snyder is not here, he's our new safety director, but we've had several meetings talking about, it's in the forefront, school safety, we're getting some inquiries from the community about school safety, and he is doing an assessment. The state, I don't know whether you've seen the news or not, the state is also preparing an assessment with Homeland Security, also the School Building Authority. So we're seeing a lot of information come out about school security, so he has begun working to do an assessment, he's going to be working with 911 of each of our buildings, so we'll be prepared when school begins on what we can do. So a lot of conversations going on. And I believe next week, he's meeting with 911. We're also looking at the roles of our pro officers and how we need to be using those in our buildings more efficiently, and they need to be visible in all of our buildings, not just middle, high school. So that's what he's working on, and I told him I would update you on that. The only other update we have for Superintendent is Mr. Lopez, he always has an update on our buildings.
And Ashley, Jason, and we met at WI with Danny, or I'm sorry, at Wilsonburg with Danny, and then at Victory today. So we, we're going through a lot of the nooks and crannies and trying to isolate some different areas that we need to correct prior to the beginning of school. And he's, he's right on top of things, gives you a good safe feeling. The other thing is the Nutterport Safe School Entry, that is going to be advertised tomorrow in the paper, you'll see it, and then the, there'll be a pre-bid on the 28th of this month, and the actual bid opening will be on the 12th of July. So we're getting to the point where we're going to start construction on that pretty soon. I really don't have much more of an update on Victory, other than the commissioning agent is put in their construction phase, so that's a good thing, that means a lot of the systems are, are completed, and now they will evaluate those and be able to certify that they're all have been installed and are operating properly. So we're getting down to the substantial completion date of the 30th of this month.
Have they released any of the rooms? I heard something about the second floor-
Not officially released them yet, but they've allowed us to get in there. Their cleaning crew's been in, our floor crew's been in, the whole upstairs has fit, has a coat of wax on it. So we, they're going to allow us next week to start moving some small items in. They're working actually on the punch list right now.
If I say quickly about, and you all know, but, you know, with this new Senate bill that looks on, there's, there's safety money in there with the new gun legislation, but there's safety money, and if we can, whatever comes down the pipe rather than, we've got, what, two schools that need completed with safety entrances?
Yes.
And hopefully, we can gather that money to finish those off. If there's money out there, we need to grab it for those and that, put safety entrance at every, every building we need, so hopefully, we can finish it with, with some money that's going to be coming our way.
Right.
Because we, you know, like I said, I don't like to give away secrets, but we've kept up with safety as we go, so we don't have these big needs for safety, because we spend a lot of time and effort, money that the public doesn't generally know about, because you don't want to give away your secrets.
Well, I think-
We spend a lot of money, and, and I have a competent fee, but now we've got this finishing touches, and want to get those last school safety entrances done, one way or another.
Did she really happen to look at those metal detectors that I discovered?
He's already meeting them. I did ask, talked to Jason, he's met with them.
Yes, he updated me today on that, they're looking at those, it's not a true metal detector station, they're portable, and they, they can run a lot of-
You can run a lot more-
Students through one time, they can-
Yeah, the innovation is-
They identify mass, a mass, like something meaningful, you know, if you have something in your pockets changed, it doesn't necessarily go off a larger mass.
And they could be used to-
He's already had meetings with one county.
Well, that's great, well, I mean, since the safety money is coming, we have kept up that-
Yeah, they're $15,000 each, so I'm-
So that safety money would be great for that.
Yeah.
So that's all I have for Superintendent's update. Thank you.
All right. Moves down to approval consent items, is there a motion?
So moved.
So it's been moved and seconded and thirded. Any discussion? All those papers say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. New business contractual agreement between Harrison County Schools and Amy Hazlett to extend school year 2022. I believe from reading this, we currently have a contract that puts it through for the summer academy.
Yeah, we have a student that's attending the extended school year that needs support, and she will work during that time.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion here for-
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion?
I'll probably name it.
Oh, okay. This is to approve the paving contract, the recommendation for Wolf's Excavating LLC in the amount of $647,344.73. There's the bid tabulation we were given last week, and also on there. So we have a motion seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. No old business policy updates and personnel matters. That includes a agenda, personnel agenda adjustment, that's for the employment of Heather J. McDonald Stonaker, health, middle health coordinator, full-time, 250-day employment term, Harrison County Board of Education, building-based, effective July 18th, 2022, and transfer and assign Rochelle McKee from Social Studies, 9 through 12 teacher, full-time, 200-day employment term. Liberty High School to coordinator of secondary school curriculum, full-time, 250-day employment term. Harrison County Board of Education, building-based, effective July 1st, 2022. That is Grant Spencer's replacement. So, that with the regular personnel agenda that we sent with board docs, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve personnel agenda with agenda adjustments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Brings us down to board member comments. Ms. Missin.
Um, she is on that.
Mr. Daughtry, I know you said you didn't have any board member comments, you're sticking behind that. Okay. Mr. Hope?
I just hope that, you know, as we come down to the end of the year, and, you know, kids are out enjoying their summer, and I hope that the summer school program goes as well this summer as it did last summer, because, you know, we're still trying to get some of these kids caught up due to the COVID, and I think it gives them a head start in going into the start of next year, and hopefully, you know, things will be better than they have been the last two years. And, but other than that, I hope everybody enjoys their summer, what a little bit it's gonna be, and we can get right back to, get right back to work.
Gary, I did have one, I keep on thinking of things. A few years ago, since this is my next to last meeting, there's things that keep on popping up in my head, and one of the things I wanted to bring up again, concerned this building, was the wash and learn program, where students could bring clothes, we had washing machines, we had discussed this, where they could be tutored as the laundry was done here, you know, because there's a lot of students that didn't have access to washers and dryers and all, and their clothes, having clean clothes. And it teaches a skill, and they could be tutored during the time, and we mentioned this, I think like two or three years ago, down in the basement, there was a whole bunch of space down there that could be used for some washer and dryers. I, I mean, I can't stress how vital that is for child self-esteem, and these laundromats are outrageous, like, I couldn't afford to go do my laundry there. So I just wanted to bring that up again, and you can double utilize it by making it a tutoring session with the students as well. So I, that was just another thing we had spoke of a few years ago that I wanted to bring up before my last meeting, to think about after I'm gone.
Mr. Daughtry?
I have no comments.
I have nothing either, so is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Children in peace, go in peace.